Clark, Fish, Jorgensen.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Parliament. Steen.
Here.
Mayor Buck.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Valerie Hicks and I'm from up by White, South Dakota. And I had just put in a request for the council to hold a fundraiser down at McCarty Park later in July. We wanted to do a fundraiser for Travis and Aggie Borman because Aggie is on the heart transplant list and Travis is trying to work two jobs to try to keep up. So if we can help him out, that's kind of the goal, so.
Okay. Good for you. Thanks.
If you have any questions about that.
Yeah, we'll discuss it. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Anybody else for visitors and timed items? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the public hearing for the special event alcohol license for Wild Prairie Winery.
The Farmers Market has currently outgrown its current space, so they are moving over to the Laverne Truck Parking Lot. So this is the dates that Wild Prairie will be there to sell wine.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the special events license for Wild Berry, Wild Prairie Winery. Motion and second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And the Brandon Valley Chamber, you're up.
Testing. Apologize for the dress. Thank you for, uh, thank you, Mayor Buck and council. Uh, I'm not sure what makes me more nervous, nervous racking doing a live shoot at 5:20 a.m. on Dakota News Live promoting On the Menu event or being and doing a city ask, so just bear with me. For those that don't know you, I'm Bob Logan. I currently serve as the Chair of the Brandon Valley Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm honored to be the representative of the Chamber Board and our 317 Chamber active and courtesy members tonight. We appreciate the value and the working relationship we share with you, the council and the city of Brandon. Also representing the Chamber this evening is Rachel Nyman, Executive Director. Thank you, Rachel, for coming. We're here tonight regarding the annual financial ask for the 2023 from the city. We'd like to thank you for your investment you have made into the Chamber for years, going back, I think, to 2001, since 2008, in which the city invested $23,000 and this past year of $75,000. Words truly don't do justice on how grateful we, we feel regarding your commitment in the past and this coming year. Before I get into the details, last year Amanda Starzil, now past Chair, said it very well and wanted to stress the importance of one word that defines a chamber and the city of Brandon is collaboration. And that's a big word from a guy from Agar, South Dakota, believe me. The definition of collaboration is the action of working together with someone to produce or create something. Even though we are separate entities, we can achieve a far greater purpose for the business and the community of Brandon when we choose to combine our resources and work together. As mentioned earlier, we take your financial investment into the Chamber seriously, but we also believe that we want you to feel that we add value to your purpose in our community as well. I look at our partnership somewhat as the Chamber being the marketing arm of the city of Brandon. Some of the marketing that we, that was done this past year and this year, we use the dollars from the city or Inside Brandon Magazine and postage. I think you just got that in the mail this past Saturday. Facebook ads, Facebook booths, banners for Second Saturday, billboard maintenance and promoting Chamber members, newspaper ads and marketing special promotions, enhanced graphic design, video cremations, the live cam maintenance at the golf course, mass mailing, printing, postage, and just to name a few. This year, we're working on some new ways to get and keep our community members engaged on why buy Brandon is so important. I'd like to say that your investment to the Chamber each year is making a big contribution to the growth of the general fund sales tax and the third cent sales tax, but it's really hard to measure. But I assure that you are, that, that we are making a difference when it comes in communicating why it is so important that we buy local or buy Brandon when possible. Now, back to the financial ask. Last year, our ask was $75,000, as you agreed. This year, despite the continued growth of our community, the, our ask remains the same of $75,000 or $205.50 per day. Thanks for your consideration. I assure that we will be great stewards of your dollars. In closing, I'd like to invite all the Chamber members or, and you tomorrow night, or is our Chamber Annual Appreciation Mixer tomorrow night at the Brandon Golf Course. Thank you for your support in making this night a special night for our members. We will honor the Business and Volunteer of the Year Award winners. Also, we'll be awarding the Why Buy Brandon Six Essay winners from our Brandon Valley Senior Class. This year, we had a record 23 essays submitted to the Chamber. Dollars are being awarded from funds generated in a record night of the Auction Amore, a fundraiser that is done by our Special Events Committee. Of all the 23 essays submitted, we could add 23 winners. And I have, if you want to look at some, I have some here. Lots of great comments on why we should buy Brandon. This is my favorite. Brandon is clear, is a clear representation on how rapid growth in both population and economy can happen when the community cares for their local businesses. And I'd like to point out, I think all that you got to Brandon Inside Magazine is lots of things. So there's lots of good things that we help the city do. Uh, if it's swimming lessons or leaf pickups or anything like that, throughout the year, we do several additions. So at this time, Rachel and I would field any questions that you may have. Either I've totally confused you or I must have did a pretty good job. Okay.
I'll take a motion.
We'll just, we include it in the budget.
Oh, we don't need a motion.
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Bob, 317 members, are we holding pretty steady on our membership? Has it gone up? What do you, what do you see in membership wise?
Yeah, so actually, um, we felt very grateful to our local businesses for hanging with us throughout COVID. Um, as you remember, lots of our local businesses shut their door, but the Chamber stepped up to the plate and did our gift card campaign to really try and keep our businesses afloat when their doors were closed. Um, so some of our businesses lowered their membership investment, but they didn't want to cancel because they understood that the value that we bring to their business is really important. And now this year, as things have improved and, um, we have lots of people coming to town for baseball games and, um, lots of other sporting events. And so now we're seeing those memberships ramp back up again. So we have seen some grow.
Out of the 317, how many of those are courtesy memberships, ballpark?
Um, I would say maybe 15 of them. There's not very many. Some of those courtesy members are members, um, for example, Pizza Ranch is a silver membership, so they pay $750 a year. And as a courtesy, County Fair is, um, listed in our business directory as a courtesy member of Pizza Ranch.
Good question. Any other questions?
Bob, I'm, I'm kind of a newbie on this, on this. So I know.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I know, you know, the, the coffee with the council is one way the council. Is there any other suggestions that, you know, us, whether it be council members or us, the city can be, can be doing to help support you guys other than just always, you know, cutting a check? And, you know, is there more we could be do, be doing?
Well, I think it'd be important to come to ribbon cuttings if, if you're available to come to ribbon cutting. Sometimes they're, you know, at lunch or five o'clock in the afternoon, but I would suggest you to do, to, to maybe try to get to those. Uh, sometimes we'll have mixers. COVID kind of stopped that a little bit, but we're trying to get back to that. Tomorrow night would be a great opportunity for you to come out to, um, to, we used to have an annual banquet and now we've, we've kind of gone down to this customer appreciation or Chamber appreciation. So, uh, I think just, just being involved in, and, uh, you know, number one, buying local and number two, just try to make some of those things. And we, it's not like we, we, we have mass communication out, you know, so if you're not, if you, if you're not on a text feed or whatever, or email feed, I would recommend you get that. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
And just on a, on a personal note, if I could, uh, my wife and I are going to be celebrating 30 years of Brandon here next April. I think the signs said 2,412 people when we moved here in 1993. So we appreciate the safe community that you have given us, the water coming out of the shower every morning. Uh, sometimes we wish the snow were moved a little bit slower so I wouldn't have to go to work, but that's been excellent. Uh, and the parks and the pools, uh, and now our grandkids are enjoying those, but thank you.
Okay. We'll keep moving, we'll move over to old business. And we'll have the second reading of ordinance 658 to rezone Track Three, the Herney Lean Edition, from, um, NRC to general business. I'll look for a motion. Motion and second to approve that, uh, uh, ordinance 658. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have, uh, move on to standing committee reports. And before we do that, I have something that's not necessarily on the agenda, but I'd like to congratulate our city attorney. She's just recently elected to President of the South Dakota Bar. That's terrific. Congratulations.
Aye.
That's fantastic. Old business. Uh, stare or standing committee report, excuse me, golf course.
You've got pay app number two for the golf course flood restoration project. They are completed with their original work. They've got some touch-up work on some sod around the bunkers, but that's about it. Grass is growing.
It sure is. So we'll need a motion?
Correct. So move.
Motion and second for, um, pay app number two for the flood repair at the golf course. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Move to parking wrecks. Parks and rec.
Yep, this is the request for a fundraiser at McCarty Park, either July 24th or the 31st, I'm assuming, depending on weather.
I would make, I would make a motion to approve that, Mayor.
Second.
Motion and second to approve that request. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public safety. Inspection report on page 26, 27.
So for the 23 new permits for homes, it, that would be behind pace of last year.
Correct.
Do you know what roughly would have been last year?
I think we're at 34 year to date. I think is what it was last year. Low 30s.
Fire department report, lot of calls. We have a wage adjustment for Kevin Coon.
Yep.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have a motion, or we have a wage adjustment for Joe Reagan.
Second.
Motion and second to approve that wage adjustment. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Bethany Meadows, their request for a fireworks display on July 8th.
This is their annual request. Uh, they've done it the last several years. It's for their residents.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Bethany Meadows request. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Move over to administration. The communication report on page 32. We have the Midwest Land Surveying Proposal.
Yeah, this is just an ongoing effort to consolidate all of our properties into, into one legal description if there's multiple properties. For instance, here, I think at one point in time, we had, uh, and we still have to add Kenny's house into the legal description here, um, to make things easier for rezonings and, and building permits in the future. So we're looking at Tallgrass, Van Busskerk, McCarty Parks. Um, and then the next step would be to petition for a rezone to institutional zoning on those.
So this was talked about at P&amp;Z the other night. So if we would go to rezone to institutional, but then we wanted to do some remodeling at this site on City Hall, will that restrict us?
It, it would, but, uh, P&amp;Z Chair Jorgensen and I just talked about it tonight. We could rezone this parcel back to central business and then it would, it would alleviate those setback issues.
Okay, so we could do part of it to institutional?
Yep.
Okay.
So Midwest Land Surveying submitted a proposal for $30,000 to replat those properties. Uh, we've budgeted $40,000 in this year's budget for that ongoing project.
Looking for a motion?
Yep.
So move. In a second.
Motion and second to approve Midwest Land Surveying proposal. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we have engineering design standards. We have, uh, chapter one and chapter two. Do we need to do these separately?
Nope, there's, there's no action on them right now.
No action?
These are just for information to show you the changes that staff is recommending. And as we go through all of the chapters, we will present them to the council. And then at the end, we will do them all, all with one resolution. So if you have any changes or don't like some wording, let us know. Um, and we can make those amendments as we go along.
Do you remember what, when did we, you know, Stockwell's did, when did we do that? How, that was a long time ago.
It was 2007, it was before I got here. So I think it was 2007-ish, 2008-ish, somewhere in there.
And are we trying to mirror, to some degree, Sioux Falls?
We are. You know, since a lot of our developers, contractors work in both Sioux Falls and here, we're trying to mirror them as much as we can. We do have some tweaks that, that are a little bit different, but we're trying to minimize those as we go along. Um, Tammy is taking these through the Development Committee as we go along. So we're getting input from the developers, uh, and builders in town as well before we, we make the amendments.
Okay, we'll move on to streets. You've seen the work report on page 46. Carbon Sidewalk Project Pay Application.
Pay application number one. I believe the project's done, probably.
Yep.
Except for some patching that we have to do in the streets. Uh, total amount due is $190,184.93. As we talked about Thursday, we added quantities to the original bid to get things done.
Motion.
Motion and second to approve pay project, uh, pay application number one. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Rushmore Phase One Project Pay Application.
This will close out the Rushmore Phase One project that was completed last year. A number of things that we're doing a little bit different. We've got pay application number nine, which is the final. And we've got change order number five, which is actually a deduct of $135,000 from the bid price based upon deductions or, or, uh, less quantity used. And then we've got our certificate of substantial completion. We've got all of the lien waivers from the subs that were on the project. Um, the, the contractor's indemnity agreement and then the engineer's statement of final completion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second to approve, uh, the pay application for the Rushmore project. Any further discussion?
You noticed that it was 164,000 under budget. I don't know that we're going to see those numbers, um, in the near, in the near future. So let's take it, right?
And don't debate this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Water and Sewer Department, nine items.
Yeah, it was, uh, it's a busy meeting in the Water and Sewer Department. Uh, first one is Water Tower Pay App Number 12.
Any questions? Motion and second to approve, uh, the Water Tower Pay App Number 12. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
If you haven't noticed, they've been busy taking down the bowl. Um, most of it is down, so I would anticipate that will probably get finished up, uh, this week. And then as, as they remake the bowl, uh, we'll, we'll keep you informed as to when the new bowl will go up.
Are they going to haul it away?
Yep.
Okay, number two is the West Side Sanitary Project Pay Application.
This is for the West Side Trunk heading out to the Hague Development Encore Park. Pay app in the amount of 531, 13680.
Motion and second to approve that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number three is the Water Meter Project Pay App.
Pay application number two and final. That project is done for the year. Um, $38,003.25.
Motion and second to approve the Water Meter, uh, Project Pay App. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number four, Resolution 17 dash 22, um, authorizing a, an application for financial assistance for sanitary sewer infrastructure, the Rushmore Phase Two project.
This is authorizing the mayor to sign the application documents, uh, as, as well as the president of the council, for the Rushmore Phase Two, at least the eligible costs for sanitary sewer. Uh, just a reminder, all of these, all of these resolutions are authorizing grant applications. They may or may not be funded.
Can we just approve ones that won't be funded?
I agree with that. Just do that.
You won't know until we submit them.
In a second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
You don't get it unless you ask.
Yep.
That's right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number five is Resolution 18 dash 22, authorizing the application for financial assistance for the water infrastructure improvements and Rushmore Phase Two.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, Resolution 19 dash 22, authorizing the application of, for federal assistance in sanitary sewer infrastructure, Bethany Sanitary Sewer Project.
Move to approve. In a second.
Motion and second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number seven, Pressure Reducing Valve Project Pay Application.
That's the installation of pressure reducing valves in the area east of the golf course in anticipation of the new water tower, increasing water pressures in that area. This is the second pay app for $41,016.78.
Can we get a letter out to those residents that are affected potentially?
I don't think so. We've got staff out sick, so we will work on that this week.
Would it, uh, maybe be a good idea to just do for starters a Facebook post or something to get the word out?
A, a direct mail would be better. Since this is, it's a specific area of the city.
I guess I would, I would disagree because if, if there is damage happening in somebody's home, I, I feel like we're obligated to have them look and see that. And we could be talking a week's amount of time between throwing something out on our communication channels versus waiting for somebody to draft and send a letter. I mean, we could specify the location in a post or on our website.
I think a Facebook post would cause a huge amount of confusion as to the townsfolk that it doesn't affect. The vast majority of town is not affected by the pressure reducing valve project. And sending out a Facebook post that addresses, basically, even if you specify the area, uh, it will cause a great amount of confusion. So we will get that mailing out this week.
Looking for a motion.
Second.
Motion and second for the Pressure Reducing Valve, uh, Pay Application. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Water Treatment Plant Expansion.
First contract is with AA2S for Communication Plan Proposal. Uh, for $17,899, they will assist the city in developing, uh, our messaging over the next couple of years for the treatment plant as it prepares to go online.
Do you need motions on these separately?
Yep.
Okay, I'll look for a motion for A. Motion and second for the Communication Plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's good.
Oppose, same sign. Moving too fast for your barb. Okay. B, Materials Testing.
Uh, proposal from Geotech for materials testing for the project, um, amount. Amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, two seventy-five, and this encompasses all of the testing requirements, uh, during construction of the plant.
Motion and second to approve the materials testing proposal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. C. Contract for construction administration?
Yep, this is for AE2S. They were the, the, the design firm on the plant. This is for, uh, CA Construction Administration for a total of one million, eight hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. They would oversee the construction and startup of the facility. It's about seven percent. It's about seven percent of the, of the bid. You know, unless, unless there's a major change in scope, which I don't anticipate at this point in time, the plans are done, the, the project's been bid. So unless there's a major change in scope in the project, and I, I don't anticipate any, I mean, there's, there's... We've done some soil boring, so we're not anticipating any massive changes in soil types or, or any redesign of any footings. Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate any major changes in the scope of the contract.
And Jack, this is Lisa Mars, I would tell you that Tammy and I worked through the contract, and in the event that there is anything significant, substantial, it would require council approval. They were pretty good about redefining a whole bunch of things that we thought needed to be changed in their regular contract. We, the council will be happy to know, got rid of a lot of reimbursable expenses that, you know, in terms of like photocopies and things like that, mileage, things that we don't like to see in our contracts. Um, and we do get some deliverables in terms of some software and stuff within this amount, too. So they were really good to work with, and, and we do have it defined that we would come back to you in the event there's something, you know, more than that, that wasn't considered and is anything significant.
Okay, we'll need a motion. Motion and second to approve the contract for construction administration with, uh, AES, AE2S. Any further discussion?
Typically, I think, is it bi-weekly?
Yeah, mainly the contractor every other week, plan on, um, this council wants to update quarterly.
Yep. So we, we typically have progress meetings with the contractor and the engineers bi-weekly. We can do quarterly reports to the council as progress, and then AE2S will be on-site when, when work is being done. During, during the construction process, we typically talk with the engineer, or the contractors and the engineer about daily. Informally, to find out what's going on and where they're planning to go, but formally with the, with the, uh, formal meeting, it's, it's bi-weekly. If we need to, we can always move those up. And we usually, we usually talk with everybody at least daily.
We have a motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Number nine is the agreement with South Dakota Game Fishing Parks.
The long-awaited agreement with GF&amp;P for their sanitary sewer discharge from Big Sioux Rec into our wastewater system. Their annual billing to start with for 2022 will be one thousand, eight hundred and six dollars.
Just for those who haven't been here, this has been about three years in the making, it took that long. They did agree to post the notices for discharge. We have the opportunity to put cameras in in the event we think we need something, so... It took a long time, but, um, we find they're gonna make get, get money for what they've been doing for years. What, Jack?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what kind of agreement do we count to payment wise?
Contract, it's, it's, uh, the thirteen, I'm gonna pull it back. Eighteen oh six per year with multipliers each year.
Motion and second to approve the agreement with the Game Fishing Parks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Before we leave water, um, can I just ask a quick question on the, so I saw the flushing on the communication, I've seen the communication too, has that started yet? Being done, okay, I didn't know how much... Does that, does that, do we go through a lot of water? I, I saw that we're creeping up to our trigger, and I just didn't want actions we're doing to cause us to go over our trigger. Okay, so do, when's it gonna be all done? Do you have a estimate? Okay.
Be anticipated at the end of the month, so.
In addition on water, so I appreciate the signs out, um, reminding people about the odd even. I'm afraid we're gonna bump over and hit our trigger, so I think anything we can do to encourage people not to water would be beneficial. We do have water conservation signs, if anybody would like to put them in their yards. You know where they're at? They're here someplace. I have one I put in my yard, so.
Any other, uh, old business? New business? Do we need an executive session?
No, but it might be good just to remind people, because I don't think we have a meeting until after the Fourth of July, that our ordinance that's in effect is for July third and fourth from, um, ten AM to eleven PM to discharge class one point four G fireworks. Two hundred and fifty dollar fine if you violate that, so it's Sunday and Monday. Not Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, it's Sunday and Monday.
We get information out on our communication platforms?
Okay, I'll look for...
Which federal holiday do we, uh, recognize? You know, June, we have August, August one.
Yeah, we do, we do eight, so forgive me if I missed one here, but starting January first, President's Day, Memorial Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Native American Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas.
Okay, so how do we, um, decide which ones we do and know are federal holidays?
Yeah, the, the, the state of South Dakota hasn't recognized Juneteenth yet as a state holiday. So I'm, the eight that we have, boy, they've, they've been our recognized holidays forever. No, I, I think if the city council wanted to recognize, uh, you know, a holiday like Juneteenth and add it to the list of recognized holidays for the city, you could.
Yeah, so different cities and different counties are adopting Juneteenth, as they might adopt something else as well, Chukasavakian days, maybe. So you would have to do that by motion if you want to add another one to a paid holiday. I mean, I think we recognize a lot of holidays, we just don't necessarily have a paid leave, and we don't close the city's business for that, but if you want to do a motion, you could do that, and that's how we would change it and add or take away.
So at this point in time... Sorry, Jack, at this point in time, the state does not, um, give their employees today off with a paid holiday? I would propose that we follow what the state does.
And some cities are, I mean, it's kinda hit and miss for South Dakota.
We don't get Veterans Day.
We don't get Veterans Day, but that was swa- that was swapped a number of years ago, Veterans Day for the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, but it's not a holiday.
It's not a holiday, it's a vacation day, so they, the council took Veterans Day away, but gave an extra vacation day. Something like that, anyway. I, I'd have to look.
The holidays we take are in our personnel manual. That was approved by council, so if you want to change those, then we can have to look at those.
I'd say if you want to put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda, at this point, it's not on the agenda to talk about. I'll look for a mo- look for a motion to adjourn. Motion and second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. We're adjourned.